Order the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting for July 25th, 2022. Will we all still stand for the pledge?
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Board Member Jenna Hardy is excused from tonight's meeting. I want to welcome everyone to our school board meeting here in the middle of summer. We want to open it up to public participation. If you are here from the public to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. If you are a student, you do not have to state your address and just state that you are a student and your name. So open it up to the public. Not seeing any public here, which I can understand in July. We will move on to recognitions.
We have no recognitions tonight.
All right, we will move on to informational updates, superintendent update.
Well, welcome back, everyone. It doesn't seem like we've been gone for that long, but it's good to get back to the business of running the school system and planning for the upcoming school year. First of all, we want to welcome Amy, who has, in the first, what was it, only two weeks? Done an outstanding job so far. She has been a wonderful colleague to work with and looking forward, very much forward to her contribution to the school system. I did put in your packets, the enrollments as of right now. They are looking good, very good, in that our class sizes are reasonable and within the parameters of class size that allow for students to, teachers to get to know their students. They're not too low and they're not too high. I consider them to be just, just right for the respective grade levels. Trying to keep the primary grade levels a little bit lower in terms of people teacher ratio, and that gravitates upward as we go through grade five and six. I'm pleased to say that our student handbooks, through being reviewed and rewritten essentially by legal counsel. It's been a while since they were updated, but just received the elementary handbook late this afternoon. We have the high school, middle school, and the elementary now. We just need to do a little bit of fine tuning of those handbooks before we return them to you or bring them to you for review. We also have just received a markup of our new crisis management flip chart. Matt and I and a committee of about eight or nine other administrators met for about six months. Steve facilitated our meetings along with Nikki Rowe and Michaela Champlin, and we got a lot done. We worked in collaboration with the police department, occasionally with the fire department, and we brought in some additional types of emergency situations that we addressed in terms of directions for staff. And in the introductory message, we've asked the staff to please review the emergency plans under each section, because in, in most instances, seconds and minutes make all the difference in the world. So we'll be distributing those prior, just prior to the opening of school. Matt is very busy right now, he's been busy all summer, and he can address that with the capital improvement projects. There's not a day that's gone by where he hasn't been meeting with someone, either onsite or in the office, about the various projects that are going on. And next week, pleased to say that we have our two-day leadership retreat, where we really talk about some substantive issues for the year. In that two-day period, we have a leadership team meeting with, right now about 15 topics to discuss. So that we'll be very busy, we'll continue to be very busy as we approach the beginning of the, of the school year. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you. And now we will move on to our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update, Amy Doyle.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the kind words there, Bill. I have, over the last 17 days, have been nothing short of amazing. I've had the great fortune of meeting the new administrative team and my new colleagues, teachers, staff that are working the summer program or coming in to do all kinds of professional development and curriculum work, some students that are here, parents. So it's just been a really wonderful couple of weeks. So thank you all so much for welcoming me and helping me to get up to speed on how we serve students and families here. Over the last couple of weeks, I have been in a lot of curriculum work. Let's see, the science department has been meeting, social studies team, English Lingers Arts will start next week, as well as the math group. So we've got a lot of work happening so that we can really firm up our guaranteed and viable curriculum that we offer to students. Once that is underway and we really feel like we have a handle on what's happening, we will be looking at the instructional practices, so doing an audit of sorts. And before I came on board, I understand this happened in LA where we were just trying to get a sense of what are the programs, what are the materials, what are the approaches that we're using? So we'll be doing that across the curricular areas and then turning to assessment. What types of assessment tools do we use? What might we need to be able to have a really strong understanding of how students progress and their, their progress on learning outcomes? So I'm really excited about that work. As we, as I mentioned before I came on board, you were talking about the New Hampshire SAS data, and I had just asked to have a little bit of time to settle in before I compiled and presented that information to you. But that is certainly well underway. I've met with some district leaders who have access to that information, and I'm excited to bring that to you. So, thank you.
And I, oh, go ahead.
So I just, I want to say welcome and just to let the public know that your first day of work was our goals meeting. So you got to work with five board members on your very first day in the district, which I think is probably unprecedented, but you handled all that with such grace, and we're very excited to have you, so welcome.
And I would just add, so that everyone in the public knows, you jumped in with both feet fearless. So we do appreciate that. All right, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update, Matt Chevanel.
Thank you. As Bill mentioned, we have several all ongoing capital improvement projects that in normal circumstances would have been done probably a year ago. Remember, probably a year and a half ago, we had carried over funds. We'd covered some money to the, do the window replacement project at the high school. Because of supply chain issues and everything like that, we're still doing that project. Hopefully it'll be done by the end of the summer. We're still working with Honeywell on the unit ventilator project that covers the entire district. 61 or 62 unit ventilators are going in various spots throughout the, the district and throughout the schools and the rooms that showed the highest level of CO2 that measured out when we did the initial plan. It was a couple of years ago when Jim Lucy came by and gave a, an explanation of what we were thinking of doing, and then it turned into a lease purchase for $4 million. It passed the, the vote in April, and it's just been hard to get the materials. So that's an ongoing thing that Tom and I talk about all the time, and it's just like, can you believe we're not done with that yet? It's just getting the materials and getting the workers and getting everything like that. Couple of areas that are going very well for us, and I want to give a, a big, big conveyance of gratitude to both Kim Damaris and Rachel Papke, the two parents at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. I'm going to call them rock star parents, volunteers, who are heading up this playground effort over at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. I sent, I'm not sure if you got it yet, but I said, okay, yeah. A lot of the site work, the site work is pretty much complete, and that's moving dirt. And for me, moving dirt is very exciting, you know, because it's, it's, it's the basis of everything else. Once you get your grades done, you get rid of all the drainage issues we had in that playground, then you could put the equipment in. Some of the equipment is actually installed, and so we're going to be moving along. Everything is moving quickly. I know they wanted to do that last summer, but the timing wasn't right. But this summer, with the whole year to plan it out, everything has gone very well, and, and it's a, a great testament to the, the parents who are working with us on this, on this project and CSSI, who's doing all the, the dirt work, and Steve Keach, who did the engineering and the layout. And so it's coming along, I think it's going to be outstanding once it's finished. We also have the Thornton's Ferry Roof Project, which is, you recall, is a Warren article for $1.4 million. That's coming along very well. We actually had the material, because we bid it so early before we even had the deliberative session, and right when we were talking about it with the capital improvement plan, and we had a contingent upon the Warren article passed, we had vendors lined up. We had bids from, you know, around 1.4 to 1.8, and the 1.41 was the one we put on the Warren article. We adjusted that before, at the deliberative session. They had the material onsite probably mid-June, because they had that contract in their hand after we passed the Warren article. So they were able to order all the insulation for the roof, which is probably around two inches thick, and have it onsite and have it all stored, and they ordered in advance, because there was a potential insulation shortage now because of construction projects, because everybody in the Northeast does roofs in the summertime. They don't work well in the wintertime. Luckily for us, with the exception of today, the weather's been fairly dry, but that, that's coming along very nicely. So those two projects are coming along great, and we're just trying to wrap up the, the other few that we have going on. And we'll be getting ready for our annual audit in a couple of weeks after our leadership retreat that we have. I come back and I get to meet and greet around five CPAs, which is always thrilling. I love CPAs, they're great people. We actually have a great firm, and we owe a lot of how things are presented and things are maintained to them and their guidance. They're partners with us right now. They always have been, so that's my update. Thank you.
Any comment or questions from the board? All right, let's move on to our school board update.
So I, first of all, I just want to remind everyone that I did have a cochlear implant put in this spring, and I am still using automated caption to do the meeting. And so I do appreciate everybody's support as we go through this process. First of all, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Fourth of July Parade. Thank you to our business superintendent for allowing us to do it. All the five board members, planning board members and budget committee members were on Jimmy Bailey's float, and, you know, people in the town were very encouraging, and it was, it was a great day for education. So I did send Matt the bill on that, and, and we really appreciate it. I don't know if anyone else wants to say any.
Yeah, it was just, it was a very positive experience, and my son loved throwing candy, so.
And the bill was absolutely minuscule, just in case anybody thought we dropped 20 grand on this. It was, it was less than $400, I believe, so it was well worth it.
And then we had our goals meeting, and it was the first ever goals meeting between the administrative, the school district administration and the school board. And it was, it was run by Primex. It was a very intense meeting, but we had a lot of results from that meeting, including we established short-term and long-term goals. We understood that we need to move the district forward with our vision. We set goals and strategic objectives. We are aligning our goals with the district plan. We work together as a team, and we realize that we need to be the change, and our goals are all the same. We want to deliver high-quality education. We understand it's going to be really important to have open communication and trust. And the vision of the board is to ensure all of our policies, people, and collaborative procedures are aligned with our new strategic plan. We are going to identify and address areas of improvement for the district. We're going to reevaluate all of our current practices, policies, and procedures. And we developed really strong goals and objectives, and we understood that this is going to be a 12 to 24-month process, but even it could be a three to five-year process for, for it. But we're going to be looking to get some of those short-term and long-term goals completed this year. Our objectives will be measurable, achievable, and consistent with our goals. They're going to be aligned with our district's overall vision, mission, and core values. And we are going to have an ongoing action plan, so we will be updating the public as we go.
So tonight, we're just going to share our goals. At our August meeting, we're going to share with the public the strategic objectives that the administration and the board set forth to achieve those goals. They're kind of lengthy, and so that's why we're breaking this up between two meetings. So let me just share with you the five goals as a board we came together in agreement on. And I will say, it was amazing. We are in alignment together. We are, our hearts and minds are in the same direction, administration and board. And it's really an amazing process to organically come together and see that we really have the same set of goals and objectives. So the goals for the next 12 to 24 months are to continue developing a culture of trust and respect. We want to create an engaged, inclusive, and collaborative district culture built on mutual trust and respect. One of our big concerns and discussions was about pathways to graduation. Our goal is to create multiple pathways to graduation that include robust course offerings, responsive programming and intervention, and engaging learning experience for all students. This goal seeks to address the learning and curriculum gaps that exist in the course offerings and programs that lead to the successful completion of high school requirements. Our learning outcomes goal is to improve our learning outcomes by ensuring our instruction is responsive to the varied needs of our student population. Our facilities goal is to have facilities and equipment that are safe, secure, clean, healthy, current, and appropriate for meeting the educational needs of all of our students and staff. And I really appreciate Matt's contribution to that goal. And our fifth goal is to have up-to-date policies and practices with an ongoing review of existing policies to ensure they are compliant and in alignment with district practices. Ken?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll echo it would, when you go through one of these goal-setting meetings, for those that haven't, one of the first things you do is establish norms and, and, you know, how to go about having these discussions, and it's things like, you know, no idea is a bad idea and be respectful for one another. And it was almost immediate that we're all on the same page here, which was just refreshing and really allowed for very free, open discussion and, and some really awesome stuff that came out of it. So as far as next steps, school district staff will work together to develop action plans for accomplishing these goals and objectives over the next couple of months slash years. And the action plans will outline who will be responsible, how the goals and objectives will be met, and the timelines for said accomplishment. And we're also, we received a beautiful report from Primex, because a lot of discussion was had that day, and they do a really nice job of cleaning all that up and putting it in a nice little package for us. We're going to go through all of that and put together a presentation. I believe August will be the plan to, to give that to you all.
So I just want to add that one of the things that's really exciting about this is these are the short-term goals for the board, along with partnering with administration. We recognize that as a district and a community, we are working towards a strategic plan. So we're still working on the vision, vision of a graduate, that that plan will, or that work won't, will continue through September, and then we will be moving forward with the district strategic plan. I just wanted to clarify that these are the things we will be working on as that strategic plan is put together, because that is a community project, not just simply a board and administration project. Any comments?
It was just an awesome meeting. I know everybody has said that already, but I wanted to, it really was all of us. The energy in the room was incredible. Everyone was so excited about the ways in which we can bring our district forward and improve outcomes for our students and improve working conditions for our staff, and just everyone was just all in with enthusiasm and excitement for the future, and it was a great thing to be part of.
And one of the exciting things along with that is we came up with objection, object, objectives that the public, parents, students can hold us accountable to, and that's what we'll be sharing at the August meeting. All right, we do not have a student representative update. She is excused tonight, so we will move on to old business. Do we have any old business? All right, new business, high school student highlights. We're excited to hear about this. Nice to see you, gentlemen.
Nice to be here, thank you. All right, let's see. That's the need ask, here we go. Okay, so, so first of all, I want to, I was hoping to introduce our new assistant principal Jill Hanlon today, but she had a family matter that happened, occurred today, so she couldn't be here tonight. So hopefully we'll be able to get her here in the future. But she joined us on July 1st, and she has also jumped right in and has attended a lot of meetings and has really had a really positive voice in, in the meetings, so. So, you know, I was, we were supposed to present this kind of Merrimack High School summary at the end of June, but I got very ill and couldn't be here. I just want to thank the, the students and the, the teachers who, you know, helped create this PowerPoint. There was a lot of student and teacher input. So I'm basically just going to run through, you know, highlights from each department that occurred during this school year. Just take a few minutes to give you some highlights and of the fantastic work that occurred at Merrimack High this, this, this year, so. Let's see here. And then this is running a little slow when I try to switch slides. But you all have a packet, correct? All right, so the, the second slide is the social studies department, and like I said, this was, you know, put together, you know, by teachers and students. Students in social studies classes designed their own project, determined assessment criteria, and met with their teacher to discuss their proposals. Some students also attended a field trip to the Wright Museum of World War II in Wolfboro, New Hampshire. Students in art classes used a variety of media, media to express their creativity. National Art Honor Society students created a relaxing mural in the gateway room. So feel free to drop by anytime, and we can show you that great mural they painted this year. In science classes, students participated in Chemistry Olympics and created chemistry wraps as a way to show what they know in a very creative way. Students in English classes created media bias posters, alchemy projects, propaganda posters, charcoal drawings, and envisioned the person behind the true crime chalk outlines. Students in sports literature attended the Bruins game and got to tour the facility. For some reason, the math slide does not pop up, pop up on the screen. Students in math classes had fun putting their knowledge of statistics in action when designing and playing unfair games. There it is. They also completed assignments where they investigated where math is used in real, in the real world. The MHS math team competed throughout the year in Math Meets Around the State. Students enrolled in wood technology classes and power production and control technology classes, directly applied what they learned through hands-on projects. Students created everything from keychains to tables and, and worked on welding and engines as well. In world language, students chose how they demonstrated skills and knowledge. Some sample student projects show how students talk about chores around the house, shopping for clothing, and their favorite movies. Students also documented their proficiency growth over time using digital portfolios. Health classes created PSAs for suicide prevention in the front of the high school using sidewalk chalk. Juniors and seniors participated in a fitness challenge put on by National Guard and the New Hampshire State Troopers to earn a spot to compete against students from all around the state for the Guardian of the Granite State. Some business students participated in different activities like Finlit 300 and DECA. In Finlit 300, students applied classroom-based financial education in a, in a contest of knowledge and skills. In DECA, students learned more about and demonstrated proficiency in topics in marketing and business. Students in our music program frequently demonstrated their talents. In addition to the concerts throughout the year, 20 students were selected to various all-state groups, and 70 band and chorus students participated in the New Hampshire Solo and Ensemble Festival, with all but three, three events receiving the top ratings. MHS students who participated in What's Up Merrimack gained experience in all aspects of the creative process from story ideas, interviewing, and editing, and editing to create Merrimack High School's news show. Students in videography created films that they could enter to be judged for the MHS Annual Film Festival. Student for student advocacy members attended three weekend leadership trainings. They worked on a draft to revise our dress code policy, which they presented to the building leadership team toward the end of this past school year and created a safe space for students to gather. Students in First Robotics put what they learned in the classroom into action. First Robotics competed in four competitions this spring and won several awards. They traveled to Houston to compete with 68 other robots and ended up as the seventh seed. Students participated in Granite State Challenge and Quizzle Bowl. The two-time defending MHS champion Granite State Challenge team placed second this year, and the Quiz Bowl team won the championship. In theater, students participated in theater activities, including One Act Folk Tales in the fall, Once Upon a Mattress, and Thursday Night Live in the spring. Seniors gave back to their community through Senior Service Day. Students volunteered around town, and the garden club members worked to beautify the MHS grounds. And we had our first annual field day. It was a perfect example of how, of students using their voice to make things happen. A group of students met with administration and building leadership team members to plan our first-ever high school field day, and the day was a success. We had a lot of great feedback on that. And finally, everywhere you look at MHS, you can find examples of students having voice and choice in a variety of learning experiences. So this was created prior to graduation, and so graduation was not put in here, but obviously we had a, a, a successful graduation where children and families got to celebrate their four years at high school. So that's, that's the highlights for the 2021-22 school year.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, it was, it's great to look at, I have a son in elementary school and being kind of newish to the town. It's great to see what the programs at the high school being offered are. It's such a wide variety, and, yeah, this is awesome to see. And just another note about graduation, my first Merrimack High School graduation, it was just very clear to see that connection you have with those students there and just how much they appreciate you, and that was another great thing to see, too. So it was nice.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I was going to say the same thing. So you came to the meeting before graduation, and we talked about expectations and graduation, which we said when you were here was, it was perfect, and I think that was a tribute to the building administration at the high school. And the level of respect the kids had was, was phenomenal and just a great job.
Thank you. It was a great group of students, for sure, and the- Thank you. It was a great group of students for sure, and the, and the graduating class. Looking forward to many more.
Well, let's move on to the NIASC visit summary.
Okay, so before I start, I just want to clarify, this is a really brief summary of, um, the, I guess the best way to say it is the last hour of their visit. Basically, the last hour of the visit, they sat down with the faculty and they, uh, gave us some initial feedback from their visit. And our, our, uh, NIASC, um, co-chairs developed this, um, brief, uh, Merrimack High School accreditation visit debrief. We have not received our accreditation report yet. We probably won't until the fall. But this is just their initial observations, um, to, at the end of their two-and-a-half-day visit, so. Uh, it's a 10-year process. It was our decennial visit. They start, they really started, uh, prep, oh, sorry, preparing for this, you know, right around 2018-19, Rich. And before my time, um, I came in and, and worked with the team and we, we got, we got our decennial visit ready to go, and the visit went really, really well. So it was from May 18th, May 16th to May 18th. There we go. There are seven, seven, uh, visiting educators from NIASC accredited schools. They reviewed our school's NIASC documents. They reviewed teacher evidence, uh, NIASC survey results, um, both from students and faculty and, and, uh, parents, and they reviewed our decennial, decennial summary report. The visiting team summarized their findings to the steering committee and the staff, framing their components in terms of conceptual understanding, uh, commitment to the gro- the growth plan, competency and capacity. They, they kind of reviewed all the priorities at the, at that final meeting. Uh, priority area one was our vision of a graduate, and we're, we're in the implementation phase of that. We met that standard. Uh, the vision of the graduate is so new that not all teachers and students were acquainted to it yet. Um, we needed to continue to engage staff and students to adopt the vision of a graduate. We need to develop tools to measure student progress toward, toward our, um, vision of a graduate, and we need to roll out the vision of a graduate to families and engage the community. That was their initial recommendations. Priority area two was, uh, developing a school growth plan, and that, that also was in the developing state, the phase. Uh, we did meet that standard as well. Our growth plan is laid out well and provide, this is the team feedback. Our growth plan is laid out well and provides a good foundation. Um, the plan continues with our UDL work. Uh, they were very complimentary of our Torch Bear Mentor Program, which has been around for two decades. I remember being in it when I was, started at Merrimack in '01. Uh, the team was very impressed with the collaborative relationship between department heads and building administration. One area of concern was whether the school has the capacity in terms of collaboration time to implement the plan. That was one initial concern that they had. Uh, let's see, priority area four, uh, three was curriculum. Um, we're in the initi- initiation, initiating phase. Does, we did not meet the standard at, at that time. The team was very pleased to hear that our curriculum work involved teachers through, uh, K through 12 and pulls district initiatives together. They liked that we have EduPlanet to help us get our curricula into a consistent format. They're hopeful that EduPlanet will help us improve consistency in instruction and assessment, and the team repeated, repeatedly stressed the need for staff PD and collaboration time to do this work. Priority area four was the social emotional learning. Uh, developing stage, we did meet the standard. Uh, the team praised our, many opportunities for students to access services. They highlighted our student support advocacy, advocacy group that was, um, developed this year and the, the student support team referral process. They noted that students have positive relationships with staff members. Students voiced concerns about student and staff mental health. That was a common theme that they wanted to share with us. Priority area five was technology. Uh, whoops. It's kind of mind of its own. There we go. Uh, we're in the implementation phase of technology. We did meet the sta- the standard. Uh, the team found that everyone can access Wi-Fi, but coverage is not even throughout the building. They had concerns about issues with pairing Microsoft tools with Google Chromebooks for student use. Uh, the team was concerned about possible inequity in students' access to software at home, and they recommend continuing support, uh, to continue to support professional development around technology. So all of these priorities, they'll be much during, in their report, their final report be available after it's approved by the commissioner. Um, what we were told was probably going to be sometime in the fall. You know, once we get, the, the report will go into much more detail on their recommendations and how they, they, um, suggest that we go about, you know, improving them and, and, and meeting them, so. That was just their initial, their initial, um, report after their visit. Uh, the visit overall went really well. They, we had a really wonderful chair, um, who was a forty-year, superintendent slash principal in this, in the Tilton area. Really, really wonderful guy, so I look forward to, to receiving the report in hopefully a month or two. Anything, Rich? Thanks.
Comments from the board?
Uh, yeah, as somebody who also just finished a NIASC, uh, accreditation process through coming out of the COVID situation, I, I just, I was in on those meetings at my school, and like this was the last thing we wanted to do, uh, with all the work we had to get done, but it, it, when you get the report and you, and you see the feedback, you really do, it really does hold a mirror up. And you get a chance to like really focus on, on, okay, where do we need work? Uh, and right now, you know, this is a good time, because it's kind of like, in many ways, sort of starting over. I too, I've, I've wondered about the, this is just my own thoughts here, um, about the Microsoft tools with the Google Chromebooks, because we use Google Chromebooks, but we're a Google school, and I just know it, it just works so well with each other, so. That's always just been a question I have had, so I guess as we go through and, and look at the report, I'd be interested to see, um, what the thoughts are about how to manage those three different formats, but.
It's taken me a while to get used to it. I came from a Google platform as well.
Yeah, me too.
If I could just interject, that's a conversation we've been having, uh, for a bit. And, uh, we have a technology director who was continuing to have that conversation.
Cool.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say to Steve and Rich and Pete, who has retired, and please, uh, thanks to you and the entire staff, because we know how much work, there's an extraordinary amount of work that's involved in preparing for a NIASC review, and so thank you to everyone.
I do have a question, um, just a question of how or, or what, what is needed. Um, on the priority area three curriculum, the fifth bullet is that the team repeatedly stressed the need for staff professional development and collaboration time to do this curriculum work. So what is it that we need to do to provide that? Or what is the challenge to providing that?
Well, you know, looking ahead, I actually emailed Bill about, today about our August Academy and, and how I, I would like to try to, um, make sure that we know what our PD plan is for the year. Um, I know a lot of it's filling up very quickly, um, with our new safety procedures and all that. So we actually were talking with Amy earlier today, and pre-COVID, and Rich, you can probably speak to this better than me, because I, um, it was, you were here and I wasn't, but I know, pre-COVID, there was collaboration days for each department. Two days per year, correct?
Yes.
And those went away naturally with, with COVID, and, and, um, we were, we were trying to re-implement them this year, but there was a, obviously, a substitute shortage. You know, we have departments that are anywhere between 12 and 14, uh, teachers. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but you typically broke them up in half, and they would meet, um, twice a year?
They would still meet twice a year. Uh, half the department would meet like on a Tuesday, and the other half would meet on a Thursday. They all had access.
And they, they've expressed that they would really appreciate us trying to reinstate those collaboration days for this curriculum work.
So I'm gonna, um, piggyback on something Lori said. So what struck me was the, you know, lack of professional development time. It seems to be like a theme. And, um, you know, as we move forward with a lot of our goals, you know, competencies, you know, we're gonna need to have that professional development time. So I think before the budget season, you know, we should think about, you know, maybe after, um, school hours, you know, being able to pay some staff to do some of this work, because we're not gonna be able to do it in the amount of professional development days we have in the calendar. There's, there's too much work, and, um, and, and, and we're gonna have timelines. So I just think that would be something that, um, you might want to think about, so we prepare for that.
And I want to thank the SAU. We did, we did receive a certain amount of funds for, for summer work in the curriculum and, uh, school safety. Uh, our NIASC response team has been meeting, so I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Lori.
Any other comments?
Well, Steve, I thank you for coming and, and just appreciate both of you and all the work that you're doing, and, uh, I know, I'm getting, I'm going into this this year with NIASC and ASCI, so I understand how much work goes into this, and I look forward to, to seeing that final report, but I'd like to see that we have made progress in, in these areas.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
I want to go tuck my six-year-old in.
That is very understandable. All right, well, as we have mentioned, our assistant superintendent for curriculum has jumped in, and so she's going to give us an update on our visioning task force.
So as you all know, that the visioning task work started right around December of 2021. Uh, that was the initial presentation to the board. Uh, a committee was formed in February of 2022, and that group has met in earnest at least once a month, sometimes twice a month. I have a lot of minutes and a lot to catch up on, and had the opportunity to meet with, um, the district's facilitator of that work, Bill Wilmot, and he's kind of got us, got me up to speed. And so what had happened at the end of June, um, is that the group broke into two short-term committees. Um, one that is looking at the drafting language around the vision of a learner. Um, so that group, what we have been working on, we've met two or three times, just in my short time here, uh, to really hone in on the words or phrases that we're going to use to capture, um, our shared vision of what learners should be. Um, you know, I don't want to give away too much, but they are really powerful words that we're thinking about, um, from the K to 12 perspective. Um, and then the, um, visioning group, visuals team, they are working with, um, Cookson Communications. Um, we've engaged with a graphic design firm, uh, to be able to put together some visuals and some media, um, which will be able to, um, be rolled out to the community, um, used in the schools, um, shared with families, so that we're all, um, really clear on what we're, what we're looking for, for our vision of a learner. Um, and as Lori mentioned, the vision, the vision of a learner work will, uh, parlay very nicely into the strategic planning, and we're hoping that Bill will stay on, uh, to do that work, um, and he's very familiar with it. Um, and so we're really excited to get that next step, um, moving. Um, one of the other pieces that we've talked a little bit about, and I know Steve and Rich are gone, but how does the vision of a graduate, uh, that they worked on for NIASC, sort of, um, mesh together with the vision of a learner? Um, some of that language, we, we want to be really clear with the community about how it works together. Uh, not that it's two separate things, um, but the vision of a learner, vision of a graduate, um, it, it has a lot of the same, um, core values and a lot of the same components, so we'll make sure that we're clear about that messaging as well. Uh, the group will meet all together again, uh, on August 19th, um, and then I'll have another update for you to see what's next. We are hoping that this will cul- culminate this part of the work, um, so that we can, um, move on to the strategic planning.
Comments from the board?
Yeah, just, because I don't remember, the, that committee is made up of community members, teacher, just, who is the committee made up of again?
So, um, there are administrators, teachers, um, students, um, parents. Uh, we've got a, a wide range. The, the groups that I've been to, because it's summer, you know, I've heard a lot of, oh, so-and-so is on vacation, um, but there has been a member from each constituency group to, in every meeting that I've been to.
Great. And the conversations sound like they've been going really well.
Oh, they, fantastic. You know, very similar to that when, uh, the synergy that you create when you're really excited about something, and the, the data and the surveys and interviews and things that the group, uh, collected in the winter into the spring have really guided that work, um, because when you see the same things, um, that, you know, the community wants students that are prepared, you know, to enter their, their real life after school, um, they want individuals that are kind and respectful and dedicated. You know, those are, are powerful, um, common visions to share. Um, so that's really what we've used that data to, to guide the conversations.
I would just add, um, since this is your first time with us, something that I had mentioned a while back. As we move in, out of this committee into reopening it up for, um, the strategic planning, we need to consider, uh, people's time, because anyone who was working could not really come to these meetings. They were like at three o'clock in the afternoon, um, which affects parents, teachers, i- in other districts, community members, those kinds of things. The strategic planning process will be much larger of a, of a process and a, and a task. And so it's, it's just something to keep kind of in mind as we move out of this process into that one.
When I've talked to Bill, um, Wilmot, just informally, we did talk about that. And I remember that from the visioning, from the goal-setting day, that we really wanted something, um, some of those times would be in the evening, after 5:00 PM, so that people that are working could attend and, and be part of that process.
All right, we are going to move on to the discussion of the interim chief educational officer Olson's performance. Uh, in the public packet that is on the website is his self-reflection and self-evaluation that has been presented to the board. We will be finalizing our report for the public record in August and, um, putting that together with his, his report and with all, with all members of the school board together. So I just wanted you to know that that is there. We are very pleased with his reflection report. We are very pleased with, um, his work this year. And so, uh, we look forward to working with you for another year, and as I said, we will formalize that report in August.
And I was just gonna add that, um, you know, we're, um, happy that we have a formal written evaluation of our, of our, uh, interim chief of educational officer, and, um, just some of the quick highlights are, uh, he empowers leadership throughout our district, and, uh, he builds trust. He's visible, reliable, and caring. Uh, we're grateful for our service to our district.
Thank you very much.
And I would just, in talking to the members of the community that I've spoken with, we are not the only ones that feel that way, for sure. It's very much echoed throughout Merrimack, how much we value you.
I appreciate your comments. Please know how much I enjoy working with you and our entire staff.
All right, moving on to requests for secondary student support interventionist position at the high school.
Thank you. During the fiscal '23 budget process, uh, there was conversation about the importance of social emotional learning, uh, looking, uh, to provide services to students and, if necessary, to staff, um, with respect to, uh, mental health issues, crises that may occur from time to time. And we have some money in the contract service account that was budgeted. And what I'm proposing, uh, to you is that at some point in time, uh, Matt and I will bring a proposal to, to, to transfer a certain amount of money from the contract services account to the salary, uh, to a salary account to hire a position of, um, a student support interventionist at the high school. Uh, this is a position that would work in concert with, uh, with the guidance, uh, department, and with the administration, with the staff, to, uh, address students in crisis in a more immediate, uh, timeframe. We have, at the present time, uh, five counselors at the high school who service approximately 230 students each. And so they have a, a robust caseload of students, and oftentimes, it's not possible for them to drop everything and try to deal with a, uh, a student in crisis. So this is a position that will have some level of training that we are going to require in terms of certification, uh, licensure, if you want to call it, and experience that will, um, be able to provide a more immediate, uh, service to a student, uh, perhaps some referral to the student and the family also. can, can work in real time with a student who is, who is struggling. You know, you saw this in the reference to SEL in the NEASK report. It's extraordinarily important that our students are healthy, they are well, and they function, they can function in an academic environment, even under the conditions of stress and crisis, perhaps in a family, perhaps in a, a relationship with a, with a student. And so I, I appreciate your support of this position. The one thing I will mention is we did talk about upgrading the job qualifications for the position to make sure it is, is reflective of the actual nature of the work and the nature of the needs of students. And so looking for someone who is more of a social worker, adjustment counselor, mental health professional that can step into this position and service our students well. I've had experience with this type of work in another district, sort of a triage type of service and it's worked out well for students. And that's the bottom line is, is trying to meet their needs. You know, you never know when a, a student is going to be affected by a crisis, whether it is family-related or relational in nature, some stressed relationships with peers, a number of types of situations. And so I appreciate your support. I think this, this position will serve the students of Merrimack High School extremely well. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
So again, I think it's, it's really important that this position is not in a silo. It's a collaborative effort with guidance. And, you know, Steve gave the update on the NEASK report and there is a number of our students that are expressing mental health concerns. So, you know, the timing is, is right. We, we have an expressed need. I guess my only question would be, would the direct supervisor be the principal of the high school? Who would be the supervisor?
It, it would be the principal of the, of the high school. We'd, we'd ask Fern Sidon to be very much involved with this person also in terms of working in a partnership. Because Fern is exceptionally skilled in the area of social emotional learning and mental health issues. And this position will benefit greatly with working in partnership with not only the guidance staff and the administration, but with Fern.
Yeah, and I would just echo, you know, where student, reports of student anxiety and depression are higher than they've ever been. And especially coming out of the last couple of years, I think this is a no-brainer and makes so much sense. Just to clarify, so folks at home, in case they missed it, this position, we're, we're not adding to the budget. This position has, we're reallocating, is that accurate?
Essentially what you're doing, yeah, you're, you're doing a line item transfer, which you per RSA can do as a school board. It's just changing the, the, the object code from an 8300 to an 8100 contracted services versus a salary line. That's all.
Beautiful.
It's an accounting thing.
Awesome.
Yeah.
If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, even though we've approved this, we need to take a vote on moving those funds?
Yes.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to move the funds from contract services to salary. So moved?
I'll second.
So moved by Naomi Halter, seconded by Ken Martin. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
All right, Anna, oh, do you have another question or comment?
Do you have a comment?
No, no. Okay, sorry. All right, student enrollment update?
Well, I referred to this a little bit earlier in the meeting, but presented a spreadsheet to you with our enrollments as they currently exist, with the understanding that there may be some additional registrations of students throughout the month of August, which is very typical. We will try to capture those in real time so that there are no surprises as we move toward the beginning of the school year. But I'm pleased with the, the student teacher ratios that, that currently exist. And we will keep an eye on, I'll alert you to any trends that are concerning. We try to keep the people-teacher ratio a little bit lower at the primary grade levels and allow them to gravitate upward just a slight amount as students approach grades five and six. But very pleased with the, the distribution of our student population as it exists right now. This was actually as of July 18th, and I think it will serve us well.
Naomi?
I don't seem to have a copy of it.
I was about to say, we do not have that in our packets.
You don't? Oh, I apologize. Oh, um, hold on, no, I don't, I don't have those copies. I'm sorry, we, they were supposed to be copies in the room here at your location, so.
If you could, if you could send them to us electronically, that will be fine. We know that it's, it's, it's really early to have final numbers anyway.
I hope they didn't wind up in the Matthew Thornton room. So I'll check before I go.
Maybe the conservation commission is looking them over right now.
My apologies, Sandy and I did talk about the fact that she, you know, and I'm not gonna put the responsibility on Sandy. But we talked about having the copies for you at your, at your seats, so I apologize.
All right, do we have any other new business?
Oh, I do have another. We would like to set up a meeting with the budget committee. Part of the goals meeting that Matt Chevanel talked about, we spent a lot of time on school safety and making sure our schools were compliant, but also safe. And some of the things that we, we talked about were making sure that every door had that alarm, that if someone went out during the school day, the alarm would go to the main office. And Matt suggested that we do a overall safety evaluation of all of our schools, which we think is a great idea. However, by the time we get that done, the budget season, it's most likely going, going to be over. So we're going to need the budget committee to, to trust us as we move forward and ask them to support a line item on school safety that we don't, we don't really have an exact number. We will have maybe close, maybe not close, but, but we would like to have that meeting so we could prep them for what we actually did in our goals meeting that is, you know, important to them and also show that, you know, a collaborative spirit working with our budget committee.
Yeah, if you're, thank you for mentioning that. If you're used to seeing a, a spreadsheet with every little thing down to the penny and it all adds up to one big total, there's gonna have to be a little give and take in order to get something in the budget. We do have our, our trusted partners that we work with on school safety. BNS Integrated Systems has been with us. They do all of our cameras and we have over 250 cameras in this, in this district. They'll, they do all of our access control too, all the key fobs, all the electronic locks, everything like that, all centrally managed, everything, you know. If we say to them, shut the district down now, every door is locked that has an electronic striker on it. And so that would be something that we could get some, a budget number, not an exact price, but a budget number and a, an assessment to try and guide us in certain areas. I know we've been talking about having a screen with a map showing any doors that are open for longer than X amount of seconds, it would, it would put like a red light on it, you know, which is something that we always try and, if we're making the rounds and we see a pen stuck in the door, well, the pen gets put in my pocket and whoever's out there has to come in the front door again. So yeah, that'd be something, if we could agree upon, you know, putting a budget number, putting a figure in there that's not precisely all, you know, all dressed up and everything like that, you know, that'd be awesome if we could do that.
But we can adjust that number if we get the, down to the pennies by the, before the deliberative session.
Absolutely, like we did with the, the roof. We saved $200,000 because we went out to bid, so yes, absolutely.
Perfect.
All right, any other new business before we move on to the approval of the minutes? All right, let's go on to the approval of the June 6, 2022 public minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I wasn't there, so I'm gonna abstain.
I, I will move to accept the minutes of June 6, 2022.
Second. Moved by Chair Rothaus, seconded by Naomi Halter. All those in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed, abstained, three zero one. All right, and the approval of the June 20th, 22 public and non-public meetings.
I'll make the approval for the June 20th, 2022 public and non-public minutes.
Moved by Chair Rothaus.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ken Martin. All those in favor, say aye? Aye, four zero zero. All right, acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000.
This evening, we have before you a gift from the Lions Club. This has been a perennial gift that they give the, the Merrimack School District every single year. We thank them very much for their, their continued support of us. This year, it's $1,000. It's to Merrimack High School and it's awarded to Michael Valinsky, tech ed teacher, for the upgrade and purchase of safety sets for the welding classroom and automotive shop. That's something that we thank them very much for. So that is before you tonight for your consideration.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this gift from the Lions Club for $1,000.
I will make that motion.
Second. All right, moved by Ken Martin, seconded by Naomi Halter. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero. Right, educator resignations and nominations.
We have one resignation for you to consider tonight. Ms. Nicole O'Brien, most recently working at Merrimack Middle School, has resigned her position with the district. We wanna thank Ms. O'Brien for her service and wish her well on her next endeavor. And then we have several teacher nominations to bring before you tonight. Lori Vigent will become the new preschool teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Jessica Preventure will become the new physical education teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Beatrice Schwaner, math teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Brianna Durand, new language arts coordinator for Merrimack Middle School. And then we have three new educators for James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Lindsay Tuttle, teaching music. Maryam Dos, Dos Casil, teaching grade six. And Megan Everett will join the special education team. We wanna welcome these new members to our district.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Chair Rothaus, do you have a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Ken Martin. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes four zero zero. All right, committee reports. Do we have any?
None.
It's kind of a quiet time of year. Correspondents?
I had, I had one correspondent. It was a woman who worked with UNH on Apex. She wanted the board to know she was very impressed with the board's discussion around the student discipline policy.
And I had one correspondence reiterating a concern around athletics at the high school and it was just a follow-up communication regarding that issue. Any other correspondence? All right, comments from the board?
Well, I will just say that it has been a pleasure the last few months to work with all of you and with Jenna, who's not here tonight. There's, there's something really exciting when administration and board come together collaboratively, excited and really looking forward to, to doing new things, reevaluating things. No one is competing, no one is offended, no one has a personal agenda. And it's, it's really been a beautiful experience these last two months, especially with our goals meeting. It was the fastest six-hour meeting I have ever been in.
That's a good statement.
But it, it's, it's true, it's true. And so I really am excited about the direction we're gonna be moving forward the next 12 to 24 months. I'm excited to work with Bill for another year, excited that Amy's on board. We always love having Matt as part of this team. He is, he's the glue for all of us. And I just think that the August meeting, I wanna encourage people to really pay attention to when we go over those strategic objectives because that is the meat to those goals that we have set as a team.
Any other comments?
I will second that, absolutely.
All right, well, we will move on to public comments on agenda items. We have no public here tonight. Again, I don't fault them. It is July and it's a little cooler tonight than it was last night. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero. Thank you and good night.